Okay, I'd like to bring the meeting to order and welcome everybody. I'd ask everybody present to stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll move on to the public participation portion of the meeting and Mr. Merker. I'm sorry, roll call vote please.
Blue. Bozeman.
Here.
Disharoon.
Here.
Holzhouser.
Here.
Humbles.
Here.
Ree.
Here.
Zouin.
Here.
Okay, now we'll move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Mr. Merker will begin with the superintendent's report.
The first part of that Freedom of Information Act report, we had one Freedom of Information Act request this month in regards to purchase orders for the past four years. A fairly lengthy project that our staff was able to put out pretty quickly. Second thing, last month when we, when I had the superintendent's report, I took that opportunity to speak about school security and speak at length about school security and that was really my only topic. And since that time, there's been, there's been another shooting. The shooting in Maryland was potentially tragic and was stopped by a school resource officer, but it's just one more event. So you start focusing on those kinds of things and thinking about those kinds of things, it's certainly negative, it certainly is. And tonight in our board meeting, we have a whole lot of stuff that we're gonna be working on tonight, the agenda's up there, we'll be going through the agenda. We have, we have important things that we're gonna be talking about. We'll be spending time on, on student fees and buses and, and other things of value, science textbooks. We've got a lot of stuff that is, that is important school district business, but let's take a minute to focus out and think about what's really important and what's really going on in our district. We send things out to our board members that some of you in the audience produce for us, others of you in the audience don't get a chance to hear these. So let me go quickly through some of these things. I'm not gonna read all these things, but let me go through some of these things. At Banner, this past weekend, they had their annual carnival, their life skills class. Went downtown to the basketball tournament to March Madness. At Dunlap Grade, we had Jump Rope for Heart pretty recently. We had all of our 5th grade students involved with the National Math Con, Computer-Based Math Competition. At Hickory, our 4th and 5th grade students are working on a newspaper club, a newspaper club that's sponsored by one of our teachers and a volunteer basis, just because she has a passion for that. At Ridgeview, they hosted recently an event for fathers and sons, a tournament for fathers and sons where they could all get together and spend time together as, as family. They give out a fantastic Fox Award where the awards are based for our kids upon kids that exemplify the Ridgeview life goals, recognizing over 160 students throughout the year for, for those kids. At Wilder, one of our teachers, Ashley Stefan, won the One Class at a Time Grant of $1,000. Our PTO at Wilder sponsors pastries with parents before school during the week where families and staff are able to make more and more connections. At the last event, 600 to 700 doughnuts are served, just to tell you the quantity of folks that are there and involved with that. At Dunlap Middle, the classic Spelling Bee is, was recently held. Upcoming, Alyssa is gonna be speaking with them at their next PLC on anti-bullying. At Dunlap Valley, they had recently an Ag in the Classroom event where they, all the activities are revolving around life in a farm, a bunch of baby piglets and all the fun kinds of things of the farm, but all kinds of, of work involved with, with farming. You might notice that Mr. Holmes is not here tonight, representing Valley. He's in Indiana tonight at the Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame where he's part of an induction ceremony as part of a Silver Anniversary Team into the Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame. And let me just end with this one. Dunlap High School, Dunlap High School has 71 kids that have scored a 30 or above on their ACT. There's five of them with a 36, 71 of the seniors with 30 or above and five seniors with a 36. That's amazing. We already have four juniors at Dunlap High School that have a 36 so far. That's, that's, that's just nuts. That's great. That's what Dunlap is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Great report. At this time, we'll move on to public participation. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? If so, raise your hand. Okay. We will now move on to the information discussion items. School activity account reports are available for the board's review. Are there any questions? Information regarding the high school random drug testing for the month of February is available for the board's review. Mrs. Kazalit is available to answer questions. Are there any questions? Mrs. Bozeman will present information regarding the middle school science textbooks.
Bowman.
Bowman. I'm so sorry.
You're welcome to present.
You want to go on?
Thank you. No, I don't have a formal presentation. Most of the information was in your information item, but we did have a committee of middle school science teachers and administrators that met throughout the year to take a look at some different science textbooks. Our current middle school textbook, the license on that is up, it was a six-year license that had been purchased, so that's why we were prompted to look at that. Along with the change in the science standards that's taken place over the past few years, they had taken that old series and adopted it and moved things around to meet the new standards. However, since then, new materials and resources have become available, so it was a great time to review that. So we did end up taking a look at the HMH Science Dimensions. That was the textbook that really provided, they felt, the best resources for them and for their students and met their needs. We take a look at just different strengths of the program, taking a look at assessments that are available, homeschool connection, to name a few things, how they meet the standards, all of those play into what we take a look at as the best possible textbook. So you can see that those amounts are on the actual, or two proposals. And the reason I had them do, do the two proposals is the one separates out all the teacher materials, which if this were to be approved at next month's board meeting, I would wanna get those ordered immediately so we could get those into the teachers' hands in time for the summer, so they could be taking a look at that. And then the other one is on there, so that's where it would be split out of the FY '18 and '19 budget. And no new dollars would need to be allocated into those line items that would be pulled out of current line item amounts that I have budgeted in those textbook lines each year. So what questions do you have for me?
Well, that's a digital proposal, so that should be fun.
Yes, definitely.
I guess only, what are we gonna do with the remaining books? We're gonna sell them, use books, donate to, I guess we had talked about?
Most of the old series was consumable, other than the teacher manuals, so most of them are gone. There is one consumable in that series that I've, doesn't get used much and I've tried to sell it, nobody really wants it, so they will be disposed of. If I could sell it, I would.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'm gonna read the following notice of public hearing as required by the Bond Issue Notification Act. Public notice is hereby given that Community Unit School District Number 323 Peoria County, Illinois, will hold a public hearing on the 18th day of April 2018 at 6 o'clock PM. The hearing will be held at Dunlap High School, 5220 West Legion Hall Road, Dunlap, Illinois. The purpose of the hearing will be to receive public comments on the proposal to sell bonds of the district in the amount of not to exceed $8,320,000 for school facility purposes within the district, including altering, repairing, and equipping the existing Dunlap Valley Middle School facilities, including constructing and equipping additions thereto and improving the sites thereof. This notice will also appear in the Journal Star as is required within the next few days. Are there any questions? Okay. Mr. Bambrick will present information regarding the renewal of the Facility Rental Agreement for 2018-19.
Yeah, the renewal for the rental facility agreement, really, there are no additional changes, it's essentially the same form as it was last year. We changed the dates to reflect those changes, but otherwise, all things remain the same.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Merker will present information regarding the bus rotation plan.
In your notes, you had a bus rotation plan from Dwayne Peterson in our Transportation Department. He typically likes to trade buses every year and roll some buses out every year, likes to do five a year. I believe he went off of that schedule last summer and did 177 passenger bus, a wheelchair bus, and a Dodge Caravan in lieu of the, the full five bus plan that is typical. So I worked with Mr. Peterson to put together a, a revision of the old plan. You might notice on the plan that all the mileages are of course estimated, but as you can see how he works, as a bus gets over 100, 125,000 miles, he looks to try to roll that bus out and replace that with something new. So for this upcoming summer, we'll be asking for permission to purchase five buses, and then you can see how his plan moves as it progresses. Changes to the plan for the future would probably be when something out of the ordinary needs to be replaced, such as a truck, a Suburban, something like that, something in addition, because he's really just concentrating on the buses in the proposal that's here. So next month, we'll be asking for approval of the plan, revisit it annually, much like you do the one-to-one technology plan, but we'll also be asking for permission as part of that to go ahead and, and purchase five buses for this upcoming summer. That'll be next month.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Information regarding future agenda items is available for the board's review. The board will review. Any future agenda items we would need to discuss? Mr. Merker?
No, no.
Any future, okay. Does anybody else have a future agenda item to add? Okay. Board policy revisions are available for the board's review. The policy revisions are for information and discussion only at this time. The board will be asked to take action on these policy revisions at the April board meeting. Are there any questions or discussion?
Actually, I have one question on the safety. Let me see if I can pull that up. It's, it basically just talks about the drills that we have for 170. And I actually had asked Mr. Merker if we should include, if, if they would want, the principals would want an additional, can't find it now, an additional disaster drill, not a disaster drill. Can't find it.
You're talking about intruder drill?
Yes. I'm trying to find it on the policy, I can't. Anyway, it talks about having one, and I don't, do we wanna change the wording to at least one, so in the event the district decides they want more than one, that they can?
It's what kind of drill?
Intruder drill.
Oh, intruder drill, okay.
Since we're getting, if, if the RSA passes and we have additional staff, there might be changes, if that's something, I just wanna leave it open, that we don't have to stick to the one, that we can certainly have more than one, if they want.
It says add a minimum during every active act year.
Okay, well then that's fair enough, so that they know that if it's important to them, it's important to us.
She'll conduct add a minimum each of the following, so leave it open. Okay, any other questions about policies? Okay. This will conclude the information discussion items segment of the meeting, and the board will now move on to the consent agenda. Are there any clarifications or discussion items regarding the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I motion approve the consent agenda presented for the March 21st, 2018, Education, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Abby Humbles, seconded by Brian Zouin. Is there discussion? Roll call vote please.
Humbles. Aye.
Zouin.
Aye.
Bozeman.
Aye.
Disharoon.
Aye.
Holzhouser.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We will now move on to the action items segment of the meeting. The Bill List, Treasurers Report, and District Investment Report are included in the board packet for review by the board. Mr. Bambrick is available to answer questions. Are there any questions?
I have a question for you, and this isn't in here, but with the new, and you might not know this yet, the city of Peoria, the combined sewer fee that's going to start, I believe, monthly in July, June or July, do we know how much our portion of that is? Are you familiar with that?
With what?
The combined sewer fee is what they're calling it because of the runoff water.
Combined sewer overflow.
I'm not familiar, but I can certainly make myself.
Because I think they, several, it's, it's based on the square footage of Parky, Watson, and Ruth, Pete, you probably, we know this well. I think they have those dollar amounts, I'm just curious what that, I think we only have two schools in the city of Peoria, right? In the actual city, isn't Hickory drove in the city and Ridgeview, is that correct?
Wilderway.
Wilderway.
Oh, Wilderway too, yeah, you're right. Right, so I just wanna know what that.
And what about?
I'm sorry?
Banner.
Isn't that still, that's not city of Peoria, right?
Oh, Dunlap.
Do we just have?
Oh, your county. County.
It's, it's city, right?
I mean.
Anyway, I know that's coming and I believe it's around the June timeframe where we're gonna see that. I just was wondering if you had any communication from the city or anything like that?
I am not, so I'm not familiar with it, but I can certainly make myself familiar with it and get information out through the board as well.
Okay, I'm not sure how much that would be, but.
See what I can find out and let you know.
Okay, perfect, thank you. From what we understand, or from what I know, it's a monthly, and, and not only just for businesses, but for homeowners too that are in the city of Peoria, but that's something I believe that they set as the June or July timeframe of this year, it's gonna be monthly, it's gonna be a monthly fee. So just wanting to know if you have any information or have been notified.
I will get some, I will get it, and I will get it sent out to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve payment of the bills.
Oh, one other thing, Jack, can you just bring up the comment or just allude to the, the jump in the value this month? The 5.8, we have some bonds.
I'm sorry.
Bond payment we have due, that's why it's higher this month.
Yes, yes, we did have a, received earlier, well, almost late, on Monday, we received a, a bill for bond payment. So that is, that was one that just came on Monday, and the, the reason we had to insert it when we did was that it's due April 1st, and if we wait till April 11th, we incur a $90,000 late penalty. So that's why that was, you know, included in the bill this month. We wanted to make sure that we got it, so I, it was, it was last minute, but at the same time, we're still within our 48-hour timeframe, so that was a good thing.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve payment of bills.
I move to approve payment of bills in the amount of $5,878,219.51, as presented.
It's been moved by Brian Zouin, seconded by Teresa Holzhouser. Is there discussion? Roll call vote please.
Zouin.
Aye.
Holzhouser.
Aye.
Bozeman.
Aye.
Disharoon.
Aye.
Humbles.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The District Investment Report is available in the packet for review. Are there any questions? Okay. Information regarding the consideration and action on a resolution authorizing the issue of, the issue of not to exceed $8,320,000 general obligation alternate revenue bonds for school facility capital project purposes is included in the board packet for review by the board. Mr. Bambrick is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issue of general obligation for alternate revenue bonds.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issue of not to exceed $8,320,000 general obligation alternate revenue bonds for school facility capital project purposes, as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Teresa Holzhouser, seconded by Dawn Bozeman. Is there discussion? Roll call vote please.
Holzhouser.
Aye.
Bozeman.
Aye.
Disharoon.
Aye.
Humbles.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Zouin.
Aye.
Motion carries. Information regarding the consideration and action on a resolution expressing intent to reimburse capital expenditures from proceeds of an obligation issued by the district is included for the review by the board. Mr. Bambrick is available to answer any questions. Are there any questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution expressing intent to reimburse capital expenditures.
I move to approve the resolution expressing intent to reimburse capital expenditures from proceeds of an obligation issued by the district, as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Brian Zouin, seconded by Teresa Holzhouser. Is there discussion? Roll call vote please.
Zouin.
Aye.
Holzhouser.
Aye.
Humbles.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Bozeman.
Aye.
Disharoon.
Aye.
Motion carries. Information regarding the student fees for 2018-19 is available for the board's review. The board will need to discuss the options presented, and after discussion, we'll, we will take action. Are there any questions?
May I?
Yes.
The, last month, we had this as an item, and we recommended no change to student fees, and there was, there was significant discussion last month, so we went back and developed some options. In meeting with the board on Monday individually and in further conversation yesterday and today, it was clear that the options that we presented were not maybe the best of options. Option one is the same option that we had with no change. Option two was a minor reduction. Option three was a three-year plan where we were cutting fees by 50% and then raising them back in 25% increments over the three-year period. That would provide some immediate relief for families, but it would stair-step it back up. That option was not, not favorably seen, so we kind of rejected three, and we've been working on option four. Carrie, could you pull that up? Thank you. So I've emailed out to you another option today for your consideration, and you can see this on the screens that are around you. The way the fee list was done before was that any of the, the changes in the fee proposal were simply highlighted in yellow, I think that's what you're used to from your past. We have basically three changes in this particular option that I have sent out to you today for your consideration, and let me simply explain those. The, under the All Grades 412 section, there are two items in there. There's Student Activity Participation Fee and a Lacrosse Fee, which is in addition to the Activity Participation Fee. In each of those two sections, we've recommended a 10% reduction. Now, 10% is not much, but it's simp, it is a reduction. It is, it's not staying flat, it's not increasing, it is a reduction. So I think those 10% reductions are a positive for our families out in the district. So those are two of the changes, and each of those are a 10% reduction. The other change is under the All Grades 412, you might notice that it now says All Grades 612. So what that means is that the 4th and 5th grade currently pay a student activity fee if they wanna take band or orchestra, and that's the only thing that is available to them. There was significant discussion at our last board meeting about that, whether that should be lowered, whether it should be eliminated, and as part of this, we're now recommending to simply eliminate that particular fee. Now, I'm not sure that this is the best plan, but it's a plan that gives our folks in the district relief. It's minor relief, it's small relief, but it is relief. The total amount of, of dollars that are lost in fees that would be coming to the district isn't a neighborhood of $40,000, give or take, depending on how many students next year would enroll, et cetera, et cetera. But this particular plan tries to give us some reduction, but not going too far. I heard the board's hesitation about what future revenues might look like, what EAV may look like in the future, so we didn't wanna go too far in the reductions. I think when we had the 50% plan, that was probably too far. It was, it was just too far. So in staying with the concept of trying to stay close to flat, but yet provide some reduction, these, this is the option that I have in front of you today. So, summary. Last month, I made a reduction to stay flat, and that's still an option. I have in front of you option, I guess what we could call this option four, which shows these three reductions. All the other fees would remain flat and remain the same, and I, we would recommend that as a potential option as well for you to consider tonight. So that's enough of what I have, and I would open up to therefore questions, comment, discussion, et cetera.
Well, we had, we actually had a really great conversation, and it didn't, it started, you know, it started with fees, but then it, it went into reserves. And what do we do with reserves? What is the board's philosophy on those reserves? And part of it was, we want six months in, and then IASB says, you know, three months is good, we have six, six months, but now we're told we have 12 months. And so, you know, at what point do we want to give that back to our community? Do we really want to, you know, hoard all this money, or do we wanna give relief to the families while their kids are actually going to school? And, you know, so, so do we wanna, are we gonna be a 12 months and then 13 and then 14? And so we talked about giving some of that back, and part of that was in the fee reduction. And where I was, I, I liked, I could've made an argument for all the options you had except for that number three, that was just a little too much.
Yeah, that wouldn't work.
Yeah. I'm sure it took a lot of work to come up with too. But we talked about, my concern, you know, we wanna be fair, right? But we also wanna do the right thing, and we just have better numbers right now, financial numbers. Back when we were talking about lacrosse, we had a choice to make, whether that be band uniforms or lacrosse, and we went ahead, or, or it came to the recommendation that it would be band uniforms, and we were fine with that. And so they got, the band department, it was $50,000, is that what it was, Teresa?
I think we did that both at the same time, lacrosse and band uniforms.
And so, and, and that was because we only had so much money, but now it seems that things have changed and there's more. So some of us were thinking, well, gosh, wouldn't it be nice to lower the lacrosse fee? As it was, they pay 450, right? It was 350 that the parents agreed to pay, on top of that, there's the additional $100 activity fee. And we just thought that was a little steep, and if we wanna make cuts, we just thought that they should share in that a little bit more than the 10%. So I guess that's where I'm coming from, you know, whether that be, if it was 350, can it be, 10% would be what? You'd bring it down to 315, but then they're paying the $100 on top of that, so can we just bring it down to maybe 250? And then in the end, they're still paying 350? I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I guess maybe if you could tell me your thoughts on lacrosse. I just wanna make it affordable to everyone, I don't want it to be a country club sport, I want all kids to find a niche, and so that's what I was after. But, so anyway, that's my thought.
I agree that, that we should lower that. I think we had completely different financial information at the time, and, and it's, it's just fairer to make all the activities the same, you know, closer to the same price. It doesn't make them the same, but it takes us in that direction, so I would support that.
I'm confused, because this was a conversation that started regarding student fees, right? No particular activity. And it went from what seems to be a conversation where there was concern from the district in having a feeder program for music, and those 4th and 5th graders having to pay a $100 fee in order to be involved in music. And that not being perceived as fair, when at the high school level, you, you pay $100 and you have a wide variety of activities that you could participate in. And I think we all agreed that that, that needed to be looked at, and Randy, you went and take a look at that, and you brought back some options. Now, it seems like that has somehow morphed itself into a specific athletic fee that was predetermined based on the group coming to us and asking for us to support IHSA, you know, sponsorship, right? We still don't have the information that's gonna tell us ultimately how much it's gonna cost for travel and, and all the other things that are involved, so I guess I'm confused where we lost the overall, where we started. You know, and I thought we were gonna come back with either keeping fees, you know, the same for everybody and taking away the 4th and 5th grade fee. I thought that was the conversation that was on the table. So if we're gonna, going down the road of trying to handpick fees for other individual activities, I think that's a completely separate conversation that should be had with our athletic director and that club. I don't think that's for the board to just come up with some kind of number at this moment, because that was not the initial conversation. And I think I even asked Randy, like, how did it go that far? I don't know where that came from.
And I wanna piggyback off of that first too, and I'm looking at the email that you, that you sent, Randy, and I'm looking at the reduction.
Which one? Oh, that one, I got it.
This one right here.
I got it.
Same one. And, and I know when we did that, I, you know, in the fall, we did band uniforms, we did lacrosse together. There's 23 students right now in lacrosse and it was tens of thousands of dollars when we did that. We did forego buying band uniforms for the entire band. We only did it for the varsity band at that time. And I, I, from what Dawn says too, when this conversation came up last meeting, I brought up fourth and fifth grade, all they can do is, uh, basically to look at that fee and I completely agree with Dawn. It was only a few months ago, very controversial topic, very expensive at this point if you look at the dollars. So I think I'm there with, with Dawn at this point, let's, you know, fourth and fifth grade, only one, two, I guess, band and orchestra that you can participate in. So I'd be there at this point, but probably not further from that point. We, I think we need to look at all because when the deficit was put in and, and I think maybe you can reply to this too, Heather, didn't we put in additional fees for classes at that time too?
Correct, we, that's what that was added.
And I understand that's a different fee, but I think we have to look at that too from that perspective. I, I think you have to look at the whole.
Wasn't that was, wasn't that what was brought to us? I thought lacrosse was always part of it. I'm not sure where it changed.
I'm sorry, part of what?
The whole topic and discussion.
And that last meeting we were talking, no. No.
I, I recall a few months, I'll have to check the minutes, but I thought this was a couple of months ago where Karen Beverland had presented about fees increasing activity fees and I thought we had at that time, I think it was the meeting we had at Ridgeview and we talked about not raising the fees and looked at options of lowering the fees. And that was probably about two months.
You're absolutely correct, but then we did have a public participation. I think it was the next month. It maybe was at that Ridgeview, but then we talked about those fees and about, just for elementary, they're only offered two options for that hundred dollar activity fee where you see six through 12, there's a whole array.
But then we tried to, then we tried to, the discussion was thrown that I thought to look at all fees and come back whether or not we don't raise and we lower and make...
That was last month, yeah, right, right.
So it was all in complicity and it really wasn't surrounding all lacrosse, Randy, but it was just to look at the fees to try to, is there a reduction to minimize the impact on our students' parents?
And I, I think where Dawn's coming from is the specific lacrosse is what we're talking about now, right, Dawn?
Yeah, I mean, that's what Beth brought up and I guess that, that's what's confusing to me, you know, I thought we were looking at either keeping the fees the same or, and or removing the fourth and fifth grade hundred dollar fee. That, that's what the conversation I, you know, I assumed that we were having and even when we got the options, um, from Mr. Merker that, you know, those options, I think I even asked, I said, hey, option three included lacrosse and reducing fees across the board and I think that was a, that's, that was a new conversation to me. I thought we were looking at removing fourth and fifth and we would hold the fees steady, but not have any increases. Because I still think we do have other things coming. I mean, there's a technology fees that'll be coming on, we have other, other things going on. What I don't like is a yo-yo for us to reduce it $10 and then we gotta add $50 and to me it's not fair to the parents administratively. We're used to collecting the hundred dollar fee to remove it from the fourth and fifth grade, to allow them not to pay that fee, I think that was the biggest concern. And I think if we address that at this time, then that, that is, you know, that would be a good thing to do, to address that. But to go down the road of trying to pick and decide, you know, what, what are we doing? That lacrosse fee just was, just established, I think that's a bigger, a different conversation.
It's just that it's the only fee that has an extra fee. You know, all the others are combined in with the activity fee. So we have the opportunity now, uh, since we have the extra funds, since, since we're in a different financial position than we thought we were in before, we can, we can equalize this a little bit. And I think we should take that opportunity.
Well, and I'm confused too about this whole different financial situation. You know, and Jack, I don't know if you want to speak to that, but we, I keep hearing different financial situation.
Well, when we approved the, when we approved the lacrosse fee, we thought we only had, I think it was 29,000 or $50,000 in that budget, when in reality there was a big, um, amount of fluff, I don't know what you call it.
One time has come by and we find that we just have more money because money wasn't spent.
It appears as we have more of a surplus of, potentially, you can correct me, right, between 1.6 and 2 million this year and last spring when we were discussing this, we are going to be maybe at a break even going into this year, so.
Correct, that's, I mean, that's, that's definitely two different places to be.
I, I guess, um, uh, yeah, I think this, I think the whole conversation is going to many different places, right? We're talking about fees and we had a specific task, which was, you know, the question was fourth and fifth, right? These questions weren't on the table prior, so I just don't like them being thrown onto the table at this point, at this juncture. Let's work with the fourth and fifth grade, if the board is in agreement to remove that, I think we move forward with that. As far as equalizing other fees and, and this additional funds that have been found, I think there are several things that are on the table that need to be discussed before money is pushed in any one direction, right? I mean, we still haven't gotten past the personnel request, right? Which is for all of our students, which is for education purposes, so I'm not for lowering anything or changing or pushing money in any direction for any specific group until we have taken care of the district as a whole, right? I'm not, long ago, remember this board fighting us from getting a counseling position that all our administrators asked for and gave very good, you know, reasons why they needed that. So I'm not for taking, oh, well, we've got money, so let's push it here. You know, we've got 23 kids in a specific program, let's push money towards that for 23 when we couldn't get a counselor for thousands of students.
And had we had the right information back to Mark?
So, so I'm just, I, I, I am concerned and I'm, I just think this is out of order, right? Let's deal with what we had on the table, let's not bring all these additional things up and throw them out there. I've not been contacted, I don't know if anybody else has, about these various different fee schedules or options. This is the first I'm hearing it.
Well, they were sent to all of us.
No, the only thing that was sent to all of us was from Mr. Merker and I disagree with option three, I think along with the majority of the board. These things you're bringing forward, I completely knew and I, I don't even know if you have a, a rational reason for it.
Aren't they on board book? Like, they were brought to us?
Did, you're, you're, what, you dispropose?
This is not...
Oh, no, 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 we were looking at this, but my thoughts were different than this. Because I agree with this, but I really, because I really do, I, I think elementary school, I think there should, I'm okay with user fees, I could have gone either way on that, $50 perhaps is too much for me. Because you want to get those kids involved. And I'm okay with no fee to get them in and starting, you know, the love of orchestra and band, I'm fine with that, but I, since lacrosse was on board book, I, I put my two cents forward because I thought that $450 was simply just too much. So I thought we could...
So I think we've heard from...
The lacrosse people agreed to it, so I don't think, but if, Randy, what were your three items? It was the fourth through 12, no charge for band or...
Fourth through five.
Four through five, no charge for band.
Right.
A 10% reduction in the other two items that are there. So, the hundred dollar student fee goes down to 90 and the $350 lacrosse fee goes down by 10%, which makes it to 315.
Yep.
Okay, so we've heard from three people. Abby, Brian, where are you?
Well, we've been doing a lot of back and forth over the last couple of days and, and I know we need to make a decision. I know we have to plan a budget. And as an orchestra parent, uh, I felt my daughter received more than her money's worth, uh, but I understand that, you know, it, it could present a hardship and, and, and studies show that children that are involved in music typically, you know, do better in school and so I think it's great to, to encourage that. Initially, I thought it would be nice if they could, you know, reduce the fee, maybe even pay $25 or something so that there is some type of, of fee. We have teacher, we have to pay too, actually. And I think Teresa, I could be wrong, but, you know, you said they only have two options. I think it's really only one because you cannot participate in both.
Well, you're right. But I mean, it's, it's two separate things, just like it is with sports.
Right, right, so you get to pick one or the other. Whereas in high school, you can play two or three sports and do several things, it's only a hundred dollars. So, you know, to me, there is a little bit of a, an imbalance. I agree with Dawn in that when the lacrosse parents came to us, their goal was to be able to be part of I HSA and, and so that their children could go on and have a better opportunity in college and, and, um, I was very sympathetic with that. But they, but we did pass that with the knowledge that they would be helping to offset that cost and I, and I know it's a startup year, um, but I think we do need to, not possibly, you know, right now, but I, I do think in the future, we do need to look at making that a little, uh, a little less of a, as you said, country club sport, but, you know, difficult for, for all students to be able to participate. So, you know, maybe moving forward, you know, we should focus on, on making lacrosse fees more fair. You know, the, the total amount is, is $40,000. That's the cost, not even the cost of the, of a teacher. So, the administration is recommending option four. I know initially they recommended no reduction in fees and I was prepared to support that administration's recommendation. So I think at this point, I'm going to have to, with saying that I think we should indeed look at lacrosse in the future because they are paying a lot of money compared to other sports, I, I think I, I'm going to have to support the administration's recommendation with option four.
Okay. Brian?
Dawn, I'm fine with option four.
There we go. Okay.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Excuse me, can we hear from Teresa?
Oh, I thought she already...
No. I guess I have a little, I, you know, concern because when we did lacrosse, um, I'm going to say it was September, October, I could be wrong in the month, right? We did forego band uniforms for the freshmen. So if we're going to, at this point, we did fund lacrosse and I know that they will and I, it was, I think, was it close to 50? I don't remember the exact amount. And the band did have to actually put in funds from their own for fundraising to do that piece of it. I just, I just feel there's an inequity there because we have a band program, an academic program that, you know, is specifically for a grade that we did not fund, but yet we're going to reduce the lacrosse, so I, I do have an issue with that. Um, I think we need to look at it from that perspective and the only reason I bring that up is because when we did that, we did it both together to make them work. And I think everyone remembers where we, we only funded the varsity and only part of them, where the band then took all their fundraising money for the rest. So I just feel that that's an inequity there from that standpoint.
I agree with Teresa and I, and I just think, excuse me, let me just finish real quick. I just think going forward, it, it's not for this board table at this point to decide, well, we found some extra money, who's going to get it, when, where? We, we shouldn't just do that right now. Let, let's take it back to the athletic directors, take it back to Mr. Adrian. He had two very good requests at that point. Why don't we make sure that those things are filled in and then we can come back? We've not even seen a full year of costs for the lacrosse program yet. Why don't we see where we are and then you can come back and look at it? And I'm not saying that, that we can't look at it, but the other thing everyone needs to remember in this room is that when you voted to approve lacrosse as an IHSA sponsored sport, you then also took on any students that could not afford to participate in that program. So if you have 10 kids show up that don't have the 350 or the equipment or the other money, the district will have to cover that because it is IHSA. It is no longer a club sport. So the country club effect has left it, right? So when you consider how much it's going to cost to maintain that sport, remember that. If the kids cannot, we're not going to turn anybody away to your point, Abby, but the district will then pick up those costs.
There are students that aren't on free and reduced lunch that $450 would be a hard challenge.
And they would still have to come to the, and they, and we could potentially have to cover that. We potentially could have, it does not have to be guaranteed, yeah, I think we can have to cover it even if it's not free and reduced. The point is that we don't know what the total costs are, so before we start moving and shifting things, why don't we keep to what we were supposed to be doing, which was just the basic fees and looking at fourth and fifth? I think we're just going down a whole nother road real too soon. And, and I think, uh, Mr. Merker, you had multiple, uh, questions as to how that even got added to this conversation.
Okay, ready?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Teresa, so what was your bottom line? Are you okay with option four or...
I'm okay with, and I guess it would be a different option, reducing the fourth and fifth grade fee, eliminating that to, you know, to, to keep the equity and, um, regaining all the fees, you know, not just, that's where I'm at.
I, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
So do you agree that across the board it'd be 10% for the activity fees?
I would, at this point, I would like just to do the fourth and fifth, take a look at, in its entirety because, you know, as we look at this, just a couple of months ago, I, I believe, and Katie, you brought wrestling to us or, or had that, so I just need to under, you know, I think we need to take a look at the whole picture because what's next? You know, and we, we need to focus, you know, not just activity fees here, but just like, you know, when I, I talked to Heather, you know, we have a lot of fees for classes too from an educational perspective, so maybe we need to look at the whole, the whole fees that we have for everything in its entirety.
So are we looking at option one then?
I think option two minus fourth and fifth.
I'm sorry, I was on my email.
Option two is charging fourth and fifth $25.
Yep, so option two minus the $25 fees for fourth and fifth.
Option two charged fourth and fifth till $25, that was my original.
Was there, okay. I, I have...
So I didn't, I didn't even have it.
Okay, so yours is a different...
Oh, it must have, I think you texted me that, okay. There's a lot of things coming back and forth.
There's been a lot of discussion about this.
There's been a lot of discussion.
I have a question, this was quickly dumped on the administration last month, right? So I just, and there may not have been time, but was the athletic department, were they run into the picture at all?
No.
Not at all?
No.
Okay, so, so your, your position is, uh...
Option five.
Option five? And, uh, and what is option four?
It's elimination of the fourth and fifth grade activity.
And keeping everything else the same.
Everything else constant at this point until we have the whole...
So it would be option one except fourth and fifth?
Well, I gotta pull up those, I got so many options just to...
Yeah. Option one is, everything stays the same.
Yeah, technically, it's option two minus fourth and fifth.
High, high bred option one and two.
Option two minus fourth and fifth.
Okay, and Abby was okay with option four, Brian's okay with option four?
That's where I'm at.
Right.
Do you have a change in your position given that she's given an option four?
I do not.
Dawn, are you for option four or five?
I'm, I'm, I'm for what Teresa said, which is technically option two. Minus the $25 fee of fourth and fifth and, you know, I'd even proposed that when we spoke the first time. So, yeah, I think that, I think that's the cleanest and that's, that's what we...
That's her option five.
Yes, that's what we're supposed to be. And I talked to Cheryl earlier and she was in agreement with that as well.
Okay. I'm trying to pull these options and make sure I have them straight. So, option one.
Everything stays flat.
No, option two.
Option two was everything stays flat and four or five fees go down to...
25?
25.
Teresa, what was your...
It's option two minus the $25. Or you would call it option five.
Option five, it's not written anywhere, but it is, everything stays the same except four or five disappears, goes down to zero.
Takeaway, okay. Okay, and then Abby's option, clarify?
I would like to know what the administration's recommendation is and if he's okay with option, the, the option that Teresa brought up, then, and if he thinks that's doable for, for their budget and, then that's what I'm going to support.
I'm glad you said that because I think we've had a lot more discussion than we've had in the past, so I don't know if that changes your recommendation or not.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with anything other than option 12 or 13. That was kind of my fear, we'd still be doing options at midnight. Really, the money difference is minimal. It comes down to philosophy. And Jack and I discussed last month, when we made the recommendation, leave everything flat, how difficult it is to raise fees back up. That's why we made the recommendation we made last month. So after discussion with everybody and hearing everybody's positions and hearing the, and Beth spoke pretty eloquently to the discussion at the start about, hey, if we've got money to give back, that's why I came up with option four and emailed that to everybody today. And it was simply trying to give something back to everyone. So, what's our recommendation? Well, I, I truly am okay with whatever the board chooses to do here. I'm, I'm gonna back out because you all have history on this that I don't have. On a purely financial standpoint, it was option one last month, don't cut anything. But if the board is interested in reductions, well, that was our option four. And Teresa is saying, let's leave everything the same, which is the option five that's on the table, leave everything the same and just eliminate the four or five music fee. I get that, I understood that. We had as our option two, taking down four or five music to twenty-five dollars, because that way, everybody pays something.
Right.
So, that was, that was why we left our option two at twenty-five dollars for music, because that way, everybody has something to pay. So, you know, after that whole ramble, I'm gonna truly be okay wherever the board ends up with this. Because the options you're talking about are reasonable. Now, the whole lacrosse discussion, different discussion. I wasn't here, I don't have any history, so I can speak from the outside. If you're gonna have lacrosse as an IHSA sport, it's no different than tennis or baseball or any other sport. Over time, the board should absorb that and should pay for that, period. I mean, that's just it. If wrestling, I wasn't here for Katie bringing wrestling to you all, same thing. If wrestling comes forth to us at some point, well, there'll be a way for wrestling to self-fund for a couple of years, make sure a program can go, and then it'll be time for the board to pick up those kind of costs and pay for them. And then what's next? Well, I don't know what's next, there'll be something next. But those kind of discussions are, are valid and reasonable things. I think lacrosse being a separate discussion, fine, I get that. But I, I also recognize that if it, if that's our sport and it's sticking, if we have enough kids that it is ours, well, then we should pay for it. But that can be a separate discussion, I get that too.
Okay, hey, Teresa, I was gonna ask you, do you have objection to, to twenty, reducing it to twenty-five dollars for fourth and fifth?
I just, once again, you know, since, and, and Abby knows this, if your daughter's in orchestra, the renting of the instruments alone gets very expensive for them. And, and when you're in fourth or fifth grade, that's when you have the opportunity to learn. So, we don't wanna deter anyone from not, you know, taking a band and/or orchestra. So, I, I think with that, I know sports can get expensive too, depending on what it is. But I know that the rental fees and a lot of, a lot of students do lessons outside of the band or the music teachers, because there's just not enough time within that small period of time to do that. So, um, to me, I'd, I'd just rather see them eliminated because there's only those two options in the elementary school.
Okay. Beth, where are you?
So, actually, I am going to be with Abby at this point. Because if I'm hearing from the administration that there is money and it's little money that we're talking about, I would prefer to do something that touches as many students as or many families as possible. Even though it's little, I just think it's the right thing to do if we have all that money in reserve. I just don't think we should hoard, just hang on to that money and keep, you know, collecting taxes. I really think everyone should have a piece of that somehow, if that's what this is.
So, you're option four?
I am option, whatever Abby's option was, I'm Abby's option.
Four.
It was four, that's option four.
Because I think Abby suggested ten percent straight across the board with zero fee.
That's the one that's, that's the one that's up on the screen right now.
Yeah, yeah, with zero fee in elementary school for band or orchestra.
Okay. Okay.
Well, and I'll, I'll go with option four as well, so then we have four votes, we need to get.
Well, that's, um, one second here, because what you just described, um, Mr. Merker, I think you may get some agreement on your proposal here, but you have to remove the lacrosse from that because that's a separate, you know, we're just talking about student fees. That, that's a specific sport. And I think that's when you get into a band and there's other activities and there may be some issue. I think that should be a separate conversation.
But this is only a ten percent reduction on lacrosse, it's just a ten percent across the board.
Right, I, I know, but just the fact that we're having the conversation at all, I think begs us to have the conversation with the athletic director and go back to it. You know, that was a whole agreed upon, separate entity that you said you weren't even aware of or you, you're not, but you're not rested of the facts that go along with that. So, I think that because of that, and because, just to keep it clean, just to keep it to the student activity participation fee, that's what this whole conversation was about. And it was about fourth and fifth and really, honestly. But if we wanna, if you wanna say we wanna just change something, should be changing something. And we wanna do it across the board, then it can be that student activity participation fee. I think to do anything further, you need to have, there needs to be bigger discussion. I mean, because we hear from cheerleaders all the time, they spend a ton of money to participate in that, we, that's not even on the table.
But they only have to pay a hundred if they wanna, I mean, I mean, every, you have to pay extra.
It's just a lot. And it's just, just because it's not on here doesn't mean that it doesn't happen. That's why we need a bigger conversation. So, I, I would, I would be in agreement, but I think that has to come off.
Okay.
That shouldn't be a part of this.
I'd be in agreement with that also.
Okay, does somebody wanna make a motion or do you wanna discuss further? What do you think?
I'm sorry, what did you say, Beth?
She was asking, Mr. Merker, what, Randy, what you thought.
Jack and I developed option four today and sent that out because I believe that, that fits all the discussion I heard from all of you. It fits that. It also gives small relief to everyone in the district, so that's why I set that out. If we're not gonna leave everything the same, then let's give relief to everyone, let's do option four. That's where I'm at.
Okay, is there a motion?
And which option?
Four, the one that's up there currently.
Okay, as, as is?
As is.
Yeah, see, I just think that's not fair. I just think we have not even taken into account the other programs. So, just because they're not listed on this sheet, doesn't mean that the parents aren't paying, you know? And so, I think until you have a full understanding on what parents are paying for their kid to participate, why touch one individual activity without looking at the others?
Do you really think that we could figure out what everybody's paying for?
I, I absolutely think you could if you talk to your athletic director.
No, I mean, what people are paying outside.
Absolutely, with, yes. Well, when I, when we say outside, we're talking about to participate. If you went to the cheerleading coach, she could tell you how much each of her girls is about having to put in on an annual basis to participate in that activity. And I've heard from years that it's expensive to do that.
We are not IHSA, though, cheer is not.
Just because it's not listed here doesn't mean our parents aren't feeling the impact of participating. Swimming, all the other sports, any wrestling that's gonna try to come on board.
But all of, I guess what I'm missing is, aren't all of them going to get the reduction in the fee, the ten percent?
No, every student will get some reduction if we do that ten percent.
Yeah.
But, but there's additional costs on top of that that we don't see, just because they're not listed on here.
But everybody's getting the savings, every parent's getting the savings if their kid isn't swimming or.
But, but some people are getting swim, uh, savings more, when you take an individual activity, that's my point. Keep it, keep it just on that activity.
Everyone, no matter how many sports you're in, you're paying a hundred, but lacrosse people are paying a hundred plus the three fifty.
They're paying four fifty.
Right.
And so, if it's ten percent across the board, they, they, they get a savings of forty-five.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's.
But everybody is, everybody is sharing in the ten dollar savings.
Well, but, yeah, I just, I think when you add things in, it just, yeah.
It catches everyone, everybody gets it.
Okay, well, let's, let's go ahead and see if there's a motion.
You only pay one.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the two thousand eighteen, nineteen student fees as follows. Fourth and fifth grade, no fee for band or orchestra. And then, activity fees reduced by ten percent.
Which includes student activity fee and lacrosse, is that correct?
Correct.
Just clarifying.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Brian Zallin, seconded by Beth Ree, is there discussion?
I just wanna make one comment. I'm gonna do what's best for, you know, our students and what's gonna help them. I will go ahead and, I, you know, with option four, but I just want everyone to keep in mind that when we did have that lacrosse and band uniform discussion, we did forego additional band uniforms. And the band hadn't paid for a certain percentage of that. So, I just wanna get that on, out on the table, but I wanna make sure that we have equity when we make these kind of decisions. It's just, I wanna put that comment up there.
Okay. Anything else?
I'd just like to say, I agree with Teresa. And I just think as a board, you know, we, we have to make sure that we are looking at all things that includes all students in our district. And not any one specific sport is more important than the other or any one specific program. And, and, and if there, if, if we're saying that we, the funds are there and we wanna share it across the board, then I would, um, I would say that parents, the ones that are paying all the extra money for swimming and cheerleading and all these other activities that your children are participating in, that you should bring that information forward. And so, the board can look at that and fair, and fairly take a look at the fees that you're paying as well. So, I, I, I empower you to please do that and bring it forward.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Satwa?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Information regarding the approval of Mangieri Companies as the construction manager for the DVMS expansion project is available for the board's review. Are there any questions?
May I?
Yes.
Uh, you remember at our February meeting at Valley, how we all agreed to go out to a request for proposal process for the construction manager? Uh, we did that, we had a mandatory pre-meeting at Valley, where eight companies attended our mandatory pre-meeting. And so, eight different companies had the opportunity to submit a proposal. Uh, we did have five companies submitted proposal and the, the, you've seen the fee structure of what the proposals came in at. Mangieri Companies came in eighty-nine thousand dollars less expensive than Core Construction, which was the next lowest of the proposals. When I saw the numbers like that, the way my mind works, I started thinking, okay, you know, do they have the same number of hours, you know, how does that all work? So, I went through a takeoff of the number of hours that you're putting on site and the number of hours was actually slightly higher than all of the rest of the companies that submitted at eighty-nine thousand dollars less in costs. Uh, Mangieri Company has quite a history with the district, having worked on several projects here in the district. So, without hesitation, we recommend Mangieri Companies to be our construction manager for our construction.
Okay, any questions? Discussion? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve Mangieri Companies as the construction manager for the DVMS expansion project.
I move to approve Mangieri Companies as the construction manager for the DVMS expansion project.
Second.
It's been moved by Beth Ree, seconded by Brian Zallin, is there discussion? Roll call vote, please. Ree?
Aye.
Zallin?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Okay, motion carries. Mr. Merker will present information regarding the approval of the personnel request for two thousand eighteen, nineteen. Are there any questions?
Heather's gonna go through briefly an explanation of what each of these positions were. As we met individually, we talked at length about these positions and had, I think, a pretty good understanding. We had a PowerPoint that I put together at our last meeting, it wasn't very good. And didn't spend a whole lot of time talking to the public about what are these positions? What are they for and why have we recommended this? Why have the principals asked for these positions? So, I wanted to get Heather to speak first, a little bit about what all of our personnel requests were. So, Heather, you're up.
Okay, so, we'll just jump right in, since you're familiar with this a little bit. But starting with elementary, um, we had asked to add the point two-five FTE of world language. Um, that would combine, like I said, with that current point two-five FTE position that we had out there that was unable to be filled this year. And that would bring our fourth grade back to those two days per week, so that they're able to have world language spoken. Uh, along with that, we had requested a point five FTE assistant principal at Hickory Grove. That's really just based off of sheer numbers. He's got over seven hundred students in that building right now. He does have a current point five FTE assistant, but that would make that assistant a full-time position at Hickory Grove. Um, the point five FTE office assistant at Dunlap Grade, this was a previously cut position, so this will bring back some assistants to the office there at Dunlap Grade. And then the other positions that were added there were, I, I know it's an odd number, that's two point one-six, but when you combine the three part-time positions for library aides, and we really currently have no elementary library staffing. Um, and it's really been a goal of our district librarian, Amy Stefanski, to build that program so that we feel this would be a great next step in that process. So, I guess I'll stop after each grade level in case there are questions, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Yes?
I, you may not know off the top of your head, the attendance at DGS, how many?
Attendance? Two forty, yeah, about two fifty?
Two fifty?
Two hundred fifty.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And one question, Heather, you have two point one-six FTE for library aides, and I know you're bringing back things that were cut during the deficit. Is that, is that where you think we should be or is this just put in kind of?
I think this is a good first start. I think we have lots of things we could do to improve our library services throughout the district, but we've gotta build and I think the best way to do that is slowly. I don't wanna go from zero to one hundred either because we wanna build a quality program. So, I think this would be a good, a good start for next year. Don't, I don't see library personnel requests coming off the table anytime soon, if that answers your question.
All right, very good, thank you.
Uh, then at the middle school level, uh, we need to add one FTE classroom teacher in ELA slash social studies for DMS and that's based off of their enrollment numbers for this next year. Along with that would be a point five FTE explore teacher. That's just because the students have that choice at that explore level and so, we need to be able with those increased numbers to make certain we have enough sections for all of them. The other request that was made there was that point five TOSA, that stands for the Teacher on Strategic Assignment. Um, this again, like we discussed last year, would be a one-year position just until the two middle schools were equalized in enrollment numbers to assist with different things, whether it come to lunch duties, tardies, any different somewhat administrative assistance that could be given at that building. And then the other addition that was asked was the addition of a point two-eight-one-two FTE secretary at DMS based off numbers. They currently have an office assistant at DMS, but that could make that person full-time if they so, if they chose to take that full-time position.
I do have a question, the explore.
Yes.
And maybe this isn't the time, but is that going to allow the language that we had talked about with the Spanish being all the way until a certain grade and then it's stopped?
I have a plan for that that I'll be bringing to you next month.
Thank you.
I actually met with two, I met with the high school, um, chair of the language department today, along with the middle school language teacher.
Thank you, thank you.
So, yes. Uh, high school requests, these are all based sheerly on numbers. They've all selected their courses for next year, so those numbers all reflect the actual needs of where our students currently are. And then we had some student services requests also, the elementary council, counselor, that one FTE based off of student need that I know had been brought the last year and then tabled, but really feel that that's a necessity to meet the needs of our students throughout the district. Um, the one FTE alternative education teacher, uh, that was the original plan, but that would really provide a lot of support in that classroom. They have recovered many, many credits this year. I'm sure Mr. Adrian could tell me the exact number, I don't remember it off the top of my head.
It was one point five, was it?
Uh-uh, credits that have been recovered. So, really though, we've got one aide in that classroom right now and they definitely need some support in different areas. We just see that as a great place to grow and make sure that we're supporting our students, you know, at those elementary levels and then again at the, the top of the ladder as well. And then a point seven-two-five speech person and that would be based, that's based sheerly off those numbers and needs based on IEPs. And then the final request that were there were the district office requests and these come out of the one-to-one implementation plan. So, there's the one FTE instructional technology coach. And you heard from those coaches last month to support those classroom teachers. And then the one FTE technology support to really, you know, as we're infusing another fourteen hundred devices into the district, we need to make sure that we have adequate support for that as well. So, that brings the total staff, it's eight FTE certified staff, it's the three point nine-five support staff and then those overloads for that total cost of all of these personnel requests to be six hundred nine thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars. And that includes salaries and benefits.
And is that original request?
Yes, this is the original request, this is everything that was on, that original request.
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve? I'd like to make a motion to approve the original request, personnel request for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year as presented. Second. It's been moved by Abby Humbles, seconded by Don Bozeman, is there a discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Humbles?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Zallin?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Motion carries. Information regarding the approval of phase two of the future-ready one-to-one technology plan is available for the board's review, are there any questions? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the future-ready one-to-one technology plan.
I move to approve phase two of the future-ready one-to-one technology plan as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Beth Ree, seconded by, I think, Teresa. Holshouser, is there a discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ree?
Aye.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Zallin?
Aye.
Motion carries. Information regarding the approval of a policy committee is available for the board's review. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Did you wanna explain it?
Sure. Policy committee, this month, we had several policies come to you up on item and up in four under information discussion. They were simple, they were easy, a lot of those were legal changes. There's just a new law somewhere, so we have to insert into policy, and they're pretty simple. We pulled out five policies and did not bring them to you, because we had five policies that we looked at and we thought, yeah, those are gonna take a little more discussion. So, if the board chooses to approve a separate policy committee, we would gather that policy committee, go through those five. Cheryl and Beth had volunteered to be part of that, everybody'd be welcome, as I've explained before. And if, if that policy committee forms, we'll go through those five committees, or five policies, rather. If the board chooses to not have a policy committee, continue doing committees all, I'm good with that too. We'll just need to look at how long next month's agenda is and decide whether to start at five or just start at six and put those in at the same time. So, either option is good. The reason I proposed this originally was I believe that a policy committee gives us more opportunity to get maybe more in-depth in discussion, and if necessary, bring in people from outside of us to talk with us about those policies. So...
And as you discussed before, we will still have every policy brought as an information item first and then as an action item.
Correct.
So, this is an additional step, in addition to those two steps that we already have.
Now, I'll speak to the negative of it. The downside of it is that everybody's not involved with all the discussion. And that's why you have a committee as a whole, I understand that. But it does give, it just does give you a smaller group an opportunity to talk. The downside, everybody doesn't get an opportunity to hear and talk and be part of it.
But they could show up.
Oh, sure.
As you suggested, and in addition, if there are questions at the board meeting, based on recommendation of the policy committee, it can still be discussed at a regular board meeting.
Yes, as an item comes to you as an information item, policies lay on the table for thirty days. If we're bringing a policy from committee to the full board, and the full board says, no, we don't wanna do A, we wanna do B, okay. Then we change that, we let B stay on the table for thirty days, and we approve that. So, it's, just because policy committee would make a recommendation, doesn't mean that that's what it is. It just means that's the recommendation of that group.
And I do like it, it allows the opportunity to meet with staff on certain policies and then get that, or it's not a full board meeting, and then bring it back. So, I really, I think that positive outweighs any negative.
Yeah, I just have a question, as far as this policy committee, will they be able to, I guess, help create policies when needed? Is that where you see them, you see that happening? I mean, we all received an email with parents concerned, I mean, would that be a committee that would then take that on? Or do you see that this is just existing, you know?
I really haven't considered that, because the documents that come to us on policies, you know, that's basically what I'm working from. The legal side of creating a policy, yeah, I get nervous about that.
Right, and obviously, they wouldn't do the full implementation, but just the working on the creating. As the email we just got, like, where's that gonna land? Would that land with that committee? Would they be looking at, you know, reviewing that, or...
Frankly, Dawn, I hadn't even considered, I don't know.
I think that should be a full board discussion, I don't know if that should be... The full board has to decide where that's gonna go before the two do.
Yeah, well, that's on the agenda in the night.
Yeah, so we can discuss that later.
Okay. Any other questions about the approval of the policy committee as presented? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the policy committee as presented.
I move to approve the policy committee as presented.
I'll second that. There's a motion by Teresa Holshouser, it's seconded by Abby Humbles, is there discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zalyn?
Aye.
Motion carries. This concludes the action items segment of the meeting, and the board will now move into closed session. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn to closed session. Make a motion to adjourn to closed session. For the... For other purposes, a state-of-the-art meeting at senior disciplinary case appointment appointment conversation of specific employees in the public body, discussion of amendments and meetings lawfully closed, and security procedures, school building safety, security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual and threatened or reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public, or public property. Second. It's been moved by Abby Humbles, seconded by Don Bozeman, is there discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Humbles?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zalyn?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Rule, motion carries, and we are adjourned to closed session. I'll ask for a motion to approve the Human Resource Consent Agenda for 2017-18. I'll make a motion to approve the Human Resource Agenda for 2018-19. Second.
Seventeen eighteen.
Wait, what?
Seventeen eighteen.
Seventeen nineteen.
Seventeen eighteen, okay.
Second. It's been moved by Abby Humbles, seconded by Don Bozeman, is there discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Humbles?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zalyn?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll ask for a motion to approve the employment agreements between the Board of Education and the administrators as presented.
I move to approve the employment agreements between the Board of Education and administrators as presented.